Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to introduce Scotty Crowe, our Divisional Director for Teaching and Learning Curriculum. Scotty, if you'd come forward and so we can talk about how the district is handling the African-American history throughout our curriculum and where we are in this process at this time. Mr. Crowe?
Hey, thank you. Thank you, School Board members and Superintendent Pons, and we appreciate this opportunity to share tonight and present what we feel some important information regarding the process and the progress we've made as it relates to infusing the teaching of African-American history throughout our curriculum, not just at one time, one month, not just in one content area, but throughout and infused throughout the curriculum. We hope this presentation will be twofold, if you will. You've asked to hear from some teachers regarding best practices, and we've assembled quite a panel for you tonight. We have some amazing teachers that'll share with you, if you will, this evening, some wonderful things they're doing in our classrooms, in our schools every day with students. And we also plan to update the school board on Leon County Schools' status as it relates to the exemplar status that we hope to recommend or that you would recommend that we would earn from the Department, the Florida Department of Education. And this board has supported the district's initiative to move forward with our efforts to gain that status, exemplar status, from the department for our good work as it relates to African-American history throughout the curriculum, as we shared earlier. So, we're pleased to have this opportunity tonight, and we have a wonderful team here to share. The panel includes teachers, an administrator, district staff, and they're here to share best teaching practices, which I know you asked for at the last board meeting as well, and just talk about the initiatives that are taking place. We have Kim Eddington here, who's an Assistant Principal at Swift Creek Middle School. At the end, Anisha Robinson, who is a science developer for the district. Michael Zatouris, who's a teacher in the middle here at Lincoln High School. Brian Freeman, who's a teacher at Rickards High School. And the wonderful Sylvia Myers, who we now know for sure is our Leon County Teacher of the Year, who teaches at Kate Sullivan Elementary. So, without further ado, we'll begin our presentation. I'll turn it over to Kim, and who's really taken the charge and the lead to spearhead our efforts and our initiatives and moving forward. So, we'll let Kim in and share at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Scotty. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to come back. I think the last time I was here to talk about this initiative was in the fall of 2009. And I'm now back, certainly with a team of people, with a lot of evidence behind me. I'm sorry.
Just so they can get it on the recording.
Thanks. I'm certainly here with the team of people with a lot of evidence behind me to support us going forward with exemplary status, the Declaration from the State of Florida, and also just to talk about the wonderful things that Scotty has said that's going on across our district. Like I said, in 2009, we have a wonderful school district that's doing a lot of great things, and we're doing them without any recognition. We're doing them without any documentation or gathering of evidence. And so, I've been on a fact-binding mission for the last two years, and I've found that evidence to support what we do here. And I'm really proud to sit here tonight to explain that to you. So...
Great.
If you look at the screen, which is very difficult to see, I'm so sorry, I'm not sure why.
We have it here.
Okay. Certainly, what you have in front of you is the law, and the law certainly reflects what should be going on in our curriculum, in our classrooms, across the district. It is the expectation of the State of Florida that we are honoring this law and that we are teaching African-American history and African-American studies across our school district, across the curriculum, in all curriculum areas, not just in the month of February, but certainly on a regular basis with some fidelity. And again, I will, by the end of this presentation and this workshop, demonstrate to you where we are doing that with the fidelity. Certainly not where we could be, but certainly making great strides, and I'm very proud of our efforts. If you will continue on. This is the criteria. There are six items here that are listed that would allow us to gain exemplary status, the recognition from the State of Florida. The first one being the school board would approve us going forward and seeking this declaration. We, even though you look here and you see the six, that is the one thing today that we have not done. I will, at the end of the presentation, show you with the evidence all other five things that have been completed. The number one, we kind of went about it backwards. Number one was not done, so, but we're here now, and I think that we can, some kind of way, right that ship and get in the right place.
Okay.
Because we certainly have the evidence to do, to move forward. Number two is structured professional development. Essentially, that requires that a district would provide opportunities for teachers to get structured professional development that will allow them to gain the knowledge, the content knowledge, as well as the different ways of introducing, incorporating, infusing the content across all curriculum areas. And number three is a strong African-American studies curriculum. Number four, being structured teaching of the curriculum. Essentially, what they're saying here is that they're expecting that there is to be address of this type of content on a regular basis. It is not to be just, you know, put out there in February or to be put out there at particular areas during the year, but certainly to be implemented with fidelity across all curriculum areas on a regular basis. Number five, being university or in school district collaboration. We would be working with other universities and other areas in the community for partnerships to strengthen teachers getting strong professional development from, you know, groups or from entities outside of what we can provide here, as well as opportunities for them to interact with the university to get some credits or classes that will strengthen them as a professional. Number six, being partner and community partnerships, and that is, again, working with the community, with the Florida History Museum, as well as other museums in the community, the John D. Rowley House, Goodwood Museums, all of those kinds of things. Other parent involvement opportunities across our community, that's where those things are expected. So, it's six things, six little things that certainly we can hit the six things, because certainly we have done so already. I'm confident of that.
Can I ask a question real quick, Kim?
Yeah.
How many districts have reached the exemplary status in the State of Florida?
That's a really good question, because you know what? If we are to move forward as we have and accept the charge, and I believe that we can do this, we will be amongst a few. Right now, we only have six other districts in the State of Florida who have this distinction.
Right.
Number seven.
So, in addition...
We would be number seven, an exclusive group.
Okay. It's important for me, because there's people at home that are looking at that and saying, "Well, how come we're not there?" We believe that we are meeting the spirit of the law, that, or the status of exemplary status, but not only are we going to meet the spirit of it, but we're going to meet the actual criteria now that says that we're in exemplary status as it relates to African-American studies in our school district. And one of those would be, and correct me if I'm wrong, if I speak out of turn, isn't it that there is a designated person in the district that is to monitor, to watch, to oversee that, Jackie?
That is correct.
Okay.
You know, there has to be a dedicated, and we've actually been doing some of that already by multiple assignments. In fact, is that, how much time have you spent on this?
Over two years.
Right. Two years, gathering information, working on this. So, we've been, from direction from the board, we've been working towards this and trying to get there in a way that we felt like would fit within our budget, not to make excuses about budget, but we had some tough times that hit, we're all aware of that. And even during these difficult times, we've decided to move forward with this process, and we just found a way to be very creative and to get out. And I think you'll hear during this presentation that we're prepared now with timelines to go ahead and move this forward with a recommendation to the board, take it right to DOE, and have DOE analyze our data so we can gain this status. But I wanted to make a point here, because I think it's important. This status isn't just like getting a certificate, you know, going in and saying, "We'd like to be recognized." This requires quite a bit of work, and we're proud of that work. And it's not like you can go out as a district and say, "We'd like to be exemplary in everything." There are specific benchmarks that you touched on, and that's what it was important to me, is for us to hit the benchmarks. That's why I wanted to do that before I brought to the board a recommendation to take this to DOE. And I think tonight, you'll hear that we're finally at that point, that we've reached the benchmarks, we've hit the benchmarks, and we're ready to move forward. Was that good, Kim?
Absolutely.
I want to interject something to clarify, though, because I want to make sure. I don't, we are in compliance with the law already. We're trying, we're trying to get to receive this exemplary status. So, we're in compliance with the law. Now, there's another benchmark that we can try to achieve, and that's where we're headed, right?
Absolutely. Those are two different tracks.
Just want to make sure that that was clear.
Different tracks, okay.
We are excellent, and we're looking for exceptional.
There you go. Excellent and exceptional, I love it. All right.
And I'm happy to have the discussion, because I certainly am interested in the exceptional. I would love to have a little bit more information, however, about the structured teaching of the African-American history curriculum. Could you just share with us, you say you've got the evidence, and I guess I'm listening for, and perhaps will be given in other discussions, but what that really means and how it's happening? Does that, what does that really mean? Is there somebody monitoring what happens in the school so that the infusion is, is it the same? Could you speak to that, please?
I will speak to that, but I'm going to speak to it as soon as we go through. The evidence is coming at the end.
Okay.
I promise you.
Nice way to tell the board, "Just be quiet." Listen to the presentation.
No, no.
I got your message, Kim.
I'm certain that's not what she said, Mr. Crowe.
He was saying it to me.
Thank you so much. Please help me.
We're doing right along.
We will certainly answer all...
Okay.
I will go back through the six again, and then I will demonstrate to you where the evidence falls under each one.
Oh, good.
Okay, good.
And if you still have questions, please bring it.
Yes, thank you.
Point of clarification, that was to me, because I was the first board member that interrupted your presentation. I apologize.
Not a problem, thank you so much. Welcome to discussion. We're going to continue on, and as an example of some of the evidence, and we would like to have now our teachers, who are actually living and breathing this thing every single day, to spotlight some of the wonderful things that are going on, that, like I said earlier, have not been documented. These things are, we're doing them. Obviously, yes, we're respecting and honoring the law. We are right there and handling that.
Mm-hmm.
There are other things that we could be doing that would show us as exemplary, but we've not documented. We have not gathered that together in a place and said, "Hey, this is where we are," and that's what we're doing. So, yes, it is two different tracks. We are certainly doing what we need to be doing by the law. And so, without further ado, I'm going to have them go in order as they are presented here on the screen. Sylvia?
Okay, I have a double task tonight. This subject is very near and dear to my heart. Two years ago, I was invited by my administration to attend this African-American workshop that was put on by the task force. And as I was sitting there, and they were, some of the districts that were exemplary were presenting, and I wanted to know why Leon County wasn't exemplary. So, I emailed Maggie Lewis Butler, and then she told me to get in touch with Kimberly Eddington, and I did. And Kimberly and I met, and I asked her where we were in this process, and let her know that I really wanted to be one of her foot soldiers, somebody that could be that connection between the district and the classroom to get this going, because I really felt like this is very important, very, very important. So, from there, Ms. Eddington, over the year, you know, we kind of touched bases, and she told me where she was at and kept me abreast. And then, the summer, last summer, she contacted me and said, "Okay, we're ready to go forth this, we need a curriculum." So, she asked me to get a team of teachers together. I was able to gather two other teachers besides myself, Ms. Sherrell Ash, who is a fourth-grade teacher at Kate Sullivan, who also has a primary background, Beverly Robinson, who is also a nationally board-certified teacher at Kate Sullivan, that teaches ESC, and then myself. And so, we began working on a K through five curriculum. We looked at other curriculums from the district, I mean, other counties in the district as a model, to develop our own user-friendly curriculum, because what was most important to Ms. Eddington, and she expressed this to me, and important to us, is that teachers don't feel burdened with one more thing that they have to do. So, we really wanted this to be very teacher-friendly, where you could just access the lessons, the technology, the vocabulary, their actual lesson plans written for each grade level. So, really, it's African-American curriculum for dummies, for lack of a better word. I mean, because it's right there at your fingertips. It's really no excuse. And it also seamlessly integrates African-American culture throughout all academic subjects, math, reading, science, and social studies. So, we're really, really proud of the work that we've done so far. We've gotten through K through four, and we still need to complete five, which we plan on doing this summer. So, and as for, I pad one out. So, I also want to talk about some of the things that we are doing at Kate Sullivan as it relates to African-American history and integrating the curriculum and the culture. After I came back from the task force training, Pam Stevens asked me to create or develop a professional development opportunity for our teachers. So, I did that that summer, expressing to them the importance of integrating a relevant curriculum to our African-American students, and how that would help with the achievement, especially with the achievement gap that exists, and also how to do that, some examples of some lessons and some ways that they can do it throughout the year, not just waiting for January and February, as we typically like to do. So, from that, it just springboard, and my faculty has really stood up and risen to the occasion. So, some of the things that they are doing are, our gifted teacher teaches immigration. So, that obviously involves African-American, or Africans' immigration, or the diaspora to America, and how they were forced, instead of coming by choice. So, she goes over that. We also do a lot with arts, Faith Ringgold, Geez Benz, with quilts, story quilts. The art teacher has them create their own 3D and 2D art pieces, and then write stories that relate to that. Other teachers in the classroom are doing things like that as well. As a matter of fact, I want to read this, because I thought it was a very profound statement that our art teacher sent me. "I do not focus on African-American artists just in February or any other artist in a specific month, because the connections and influences of African art span many cultures and influence many artists, such as Picasso and his work and his move to Cubism. I use a world map constantly to teach where specific art is located and how it is influenced by other countries, trading, and colonizations. I also teach a timeline and include ancient arts from Africa and African-American artists in the U.S." And that's essentially what we are doing. I mean, our influences reach from art to science to math, and I think that it's important that students have a sense of pride, African-American students have a sense of pride of what their ancestors have contributed to in our American culture and world cultures. We also do passages, reading passages, that are related to African-American authors, scientists, artists, so they can do comprehension that way. One of our teachers says that she has a instructional aide that is a, has a master's in African-American studies. So, each week, he highlights a different African-American and discusses it with the EBD kids, or the Emotionally Behavioral Handicap, the EBD. And so, also, lessons with projects that also feature African-American people and contributors to our culture. So, I think I'm missing some things, my, went out on me, but I think I pretty much hit it all. Oh, Harlem Renaissance. A lot of our teachers are teaching the Harlem Renaissance, because it's so rich with the art and the poetry and the music and the activism. And they'll start in February and finish throughout May, or they may start in October and it reaches and spans through February. And also, Florida history, the Black Americans and the Civil Rights Movement is what we talk about in fourth grade, and also writing that relates to how these things that have happened in the past, how they impact your lives now, because I think that it's very important that students understand how the past impacts their present. So, that is some of the things that we're doing at Kate Sullivan.
Very good.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I just wanted to share with you guys some really fascinating things that we're doing in our district. Me personally, not only do I teach African-American history at Lincoln High School, I am a coach of Black History Brain Bowl, which has been very successful in the past. Black History Brain Bowl involves general knowledge, Black History trivia questions, and we read books of notable authors that really talk about important events in Black history. This helps with our students developing rigor and stamina, helping on tests such as FCAT or other tests, college preparatory classes, ACT, SAT, or the PERT. We have been very successful, in the past four years, we have won three regional championships. Two out of the last three years, we've won state championships, which every time you win state, you get a chance to get a scholarship. And so, there are at least a dozen of our team members that have gotten scholarships. The greatest part about that, to me, is them coming back to school and sharing their success with the current members. There's one, one student in particular that is a part of the honors program at Morehouse, and he had just got an interview to become a Rhodes Scholar.
Oh, wow.
So, this is, you know, evidence that this is going beyond, you know, just beyond Lincoln. A fun thing that what we did this year was, I kind of organized a student-versus-teacher Black History Brain Bowl competition, which turned out, I thought it was going to be a friendly competition, but...
Maybe not.
You know, yeah, right. The faculty wanted to, they wanted to win, and they wanted to dominate, and the students obviously wanted to show how well that they were prepared, and it was, it was a lot more competitive than I thought. It was very close at the end, but the students did pull it out, which kind of upset the faculty members. But I'm really looking forward to having this again next year. Earlier this month, in commemoration with Patricia Stevens-Doo in her passing, I kind of sent out an excerpt from one of her books that she wrote with her daughter, Freedom in the Family. And it kind of talks about, you know, her role in the Civil Rights Movement here in Tallahassee, and how her and her sister, you know, really were a part of the first, what are called jail ends, and choosing jail as opposed to paying their fine for integrating, helping to try to integrate the Woolworths here in Tallahassee. The big thing about that was, I heard a lot of feedback from not only teachers, but students. They felt, the students in particular, felt the disconnect between civil rights and, you know, how does Tallahassee relate to that? They thought, oh, you know, it took place in the 50s and the 60s, and that was, you know, ages ago. It only happened in Mississippi or Alabama, but how integral Tallahassee is to the civil rights really kind of touched home with them, hearing stories about, you know, this is how I can sit next to an Asian, how I can sit next to a white person, next to a black person, or a person, you know, of minority, and it's no big deal. And they got it, you know? That's exactly, because of their struggle, because of their sacrifice, we don't really kind of think about that now. These are the kind of good things that are going on in our district.
Very good.
Can I ask a quick question? Do we do the Black History Brain Bowl at any of the other high schools?
We do.
Yes.
At Charles?
We have it at Charles, yes.
And at Rickards.
And at Rickards. Rickards, those are the ones that competed this year.
We've just seen you in here so many times getting all these awards, I was beginning to wonder if you were the only one.
Rickards came in second place. Rickards came in second place. This year.
Okay, excuse me, go ahead.
Good evening to the board, good evening to Superintendent Pons. Brian Freeman wanted to talk briefly about some of the things that we're doing at Rickards High School. As Ms. Maggie Lewis Butler said, we are, I am the Black History Brain Bowl coach at the school, and it's something that we really have been challenging, not just the African-American students to be a part of, but all students to be a part of. So, that's something that we've really been pushing. One thing that our social studies department said is that African-American history shouldn't be something that stands alone. We should try to as much as possible to infuse it into the curriculum, because it's American history.
Right.
So, that's something that we really tried to take the initiative on doing. And we really reached out, again, to multicultural students to be involved in the Black History Brain Bowl, because that, we felt like that was really important. Another initiative that we took was, we put together a Black History Fair, and we really went to the different departments, and we said, "How can we take Black History and really infuse it into the different courses, into the different subjects?" So, we went to science, we went to biology, we went to chemistry, and we really found those African-Americans that made a difference in their respective subjects. So, we presented that during Black History Month, and it was something that really challenged the students. They had to actually do a research project, and it was really something that was very rigorous, because they had to do an abstract, they had to go out and do the research over a few months. So, it was something that really challenged the students, and it very much so impacted them. And again, it wasn't just something that they did in an isolated class, it was something that we did school-wide. And that's something that, again, we're going to try to partner with other high schools to try to do, because, again, it is important to understand that it shouldn't just be something that's taught in an African-American history class, it should be something that's taught to all of our students, and that's something that we're definitely taking the initiative of doing, not only at the school, but at the district level.
Very good.
Thank you. Good, good.
Good evening, School Board members, Superintendent Pons. My name is Anisha Robinson, I'm the science developer, and I just kind of want to highlight some of the things that we're doing and what we're working towards in our science curriculum as we infuse African-American history into the science content areas in the different courses. We're directing our attention to span K-12 elementary, middle, and high school science content areas, with our focus being on kindergarten through fifth-grade science, sixth through eighth-grade comprehensive science, and the biology, chemistry, physics, environmental science, as well as earth-space science courses. The contributions of African-American scientists and inventors will be infused into the science content curriculum. It will be taught in conjunction with our science content, and each nine weeks, a significant African-American scientist or inventor will be highlighted, allowing the students in K through 12 to learn about different African-American scientists or inventors within their science curriculum. So, if they're learning about plants at a certain grade level, then we want to talk about George Washington Carver, for example, and infuse that directly into the content, so there's a seamless approach there. And we're steering our focus away from just hitting one specific timeframe like Black History Month, and having it go school throughout the entire school and throughout the entire school year. Teachers are working together to develop short lessons or little mini presentations that will emphasize the contributions made by African-American scientists and inventors. It would also bring to life the current science curriculum that the teachers are presenting to the students, so they can learn about the various different contribution. And one thing that we found that was very important, as you guys have heard from all, everyone on the panel up here today, that it also allows our students to kind of have a personal connection to the material. So, if they're just learning about science stuff, it really doesn't hit home if they don't know anything about it, but if there's another person that's similar to them that participated in these different activities, or had a piece of this in science history, then they know that it's important, and they can draw a better personal connection to that as well. And our curriculum that we're working on, we're going to partner with Sylvia Myers at the elementary level, and then some of our high school teachers here, and some of our other middle school teachers, to create the science curriculum that we're doing. And we want to kind of keep it short and simple, so we know that it's infused, and we don't want to put anything else additionally on the teachers, but we feel that it's very important that they learn about these things, as they're learning their specific content Additionally, what we're looking to add to our, our school media centers and resource libraries would be providing age-appropriate literature books that kind of highlight and focus on scientists, African-American scientists and inventors, and it'll spotlight different people at specific grade levels. And as a part of our virtual schools, you know, we have a lot of virtual science courses that are offered, so we're also partnering with our virtual schools here to integrate whatever we're doing in our, in our brick-and-mortar classrooms to that, so the students have that same exact opportunity, and they're learning those same scientists and inventors with the virtual school as well. And we're also partnering with our reading coaches at all the schools, so we're kind of spanning the gamut here, and including all teachers, and not just in our history classes, but science and reading, and our virtual school students, so the students can learn about real-world applications and the discoveries made by African-American scientists and inventors. And so, you'll kind of see here, I have some books here that we're looking, we're putting together little packets and kind of seeing what we can do to add to school media centers and other resource libraries at different levels, so you'll kind of see some of the books that we brought in today to highlight those areas, and so teachers can have a resource, they can go directly to some different areas and get some, some real knowledge about some people that some of the students may have never heard of before. So, we want to make sure that's important, that we share everything with them.
Great. Ms. Bowen?
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank you for, for being here today, and to thank you for the hard work that has gone into this. I'm sitting here smiling very proudly, because I remember when Kim first came to the district and started to talk about and work with us as the board superintendent and various other staff members to get this project, and I'm going to call it that, where it is today, because it's not finished, but it's underway, and that's a great, great underpinning for what is still yet to become an outstanding program. I want to thank you all for that. And I suspect by the number of people in the audience tonight, there's great interest in this topic, because it is February, the shortest month in the year, African-American History Month, the month that has been designated as the time when we talk about the achievements of African-Americans. And unfortunately, some people still think that that is the only time that we ought to do that. In this county, I'm so very proud that we have a superintendent and a board In this county, I'm so very proud that we have a superintendent and a board that is visionary enough to know that that is just not enough, that that is no longer acceptable. And while I'm happy to see you out there doing what you're doing, I, I know that there's still more that we can do. And Mr. Zatoris, you've been here with us before. I thank you for what you do, and I think it must just be a passion of yours. But until and unless, in my opinion, we are able to infuse what we do in the minds and the hearts of individuals who must teach our children, and I do mean all of our children, about the legacy and the sacrifice and the achievements of African-Americans in, in, in the United States and the world, and particularly those children who are the direct descendants of African-Americans, to include those who are not as well. But we can ill afford to say that, you know, we're gonna be exemplary, yes, we are. But in my mind and in my heart, I want to know about the, the, the amount of diversity in the buying-in to this process. Now, in many instances, thi- this is February, Black History Month, and I've been to several schools. You know, you get called to come out to this, and they serve great food, and they bring on great programs and that kind of thing. But I, if we're gonna workshop this and really talk about it from the gut level of, is it really happening, or is it just happening on the surface of, of what you're saying? And I don't say that as an indictment, but you say, Kim, that you've got the evidence of this. Is this the time to ask the question? Show me the evidence.
Well, I will show you the money.
Yes.
If you will go to our next slide. As I was explaining, there are two tracks. Certainly, we're looking at the infusion of a curriculum and working really well with that, and that is following the letter of the law. And then we're also looking at the State of Florida Task Force on African-American History's exemplary status, and that's the icing on the cake. So we have the cake, and now we're looking at putting icing on that cake. If you'll go on to the next slide, please. If you look here, basically, I took this directly from the State of Florida Task Force website. That's what they say a curriculum looks, looks like for them, across all grade levels. If I look at that, I see a social studies class, particularly because I'm a social studies teacher. When I also look at that, I, I see it in a very, very limiting, very structured framework, which is, in a lot of regard, very antiquated. What we have been working on building here in our district surpasses that. In fact, what we've done here, as you can see, that's exempli- exemplified by the people that have spoken, we're looking at it from a standpoint of making sure that every subject area is addressing this, that it is, it is seamlessly infused, that it is also natural. And when I say I don't want it to be one more burden or one more thing that people have to do, I think that when you give someone a task, you don't give them what they need to pull off the task, you don't give, permeate their hearts and their minds, and they have a full appreciation and understanding for that task, then it becomes a burden. We are working hard in this area to make sure that we are doing exactly what you're saying, that we are permeating minds and hearts, so that people can understand not only that it's a, a subject matter, but it's also about people that they see every day, living and breathing people. Students who are sitting before the FCAT exam, who do not see themselves in that task, and for that reason, they go, "FCAT? Who cares?" But when they are sitting and they're doing write-up on a question, now that prompt actually includes content or verbiage that speaks to them, now it becomes part of them. It becomes something that they say, "Oh, well, what, okay, well, maybe so. Maybe now I will try this on for size, because now I can actually see myself in it." That's where the diversity piece comes in, that's where the permutation of the heart comes in, because there is not a teacher in this district that I believe will look at a kid and see a light bulb goes, go off in their head, and have them say, "You know what? I actually want to do this assignment," and them not go, "Whoa, I'm gonna give you more of that."
Good, good. I'm happy to hear you say that, and I'm so happy that this is not another, well, we don't have any of those, just feel-good reports. But it is a report with some substance in it, and it is a report that continues to hold us and others accountable for teaching all of the children in this district. This is very important to me, and I can never hide the fact that I am an African-American woman, even if I wanted to. And of course, I don't. And so, as we talk about this topic and as we workshop it, it is important for all children, the ones who look like me and the ones who don't look like me, to understand the importance of, 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 of what, what we're trying to do and what we're talking about. In my mind today, when I, when I was thinking about this, we have, in the past few weeks, just gotten information, well, we knew it, but it is now public that our district is minority-majority. I don't know what that really means to some folk, but it could mean that some people are starting to take a look at us in a different way, to start to take a look at how we go about infusing the curriculum with information. I mean, we're training leaders, and do you not know that lots of boys and girls, black like me, might only think of Oprah Winfrey? They know some football players and some basketball players. They don't know any scientists and any doctors, nobody has taught them about that. But in our county, we're starting to do that. And when you start to teach people about the importance that you think they bring, then it sets up that respect and the relevance that you really want them to achieve. The other thought that I had, board members, I certainly hope that in the distant future, when real research is done about our overage kids, that we never find out that there was a time in our history, in this county, when if a little boy or a little girl had known that there were some important people to him, to her, who did some important things, that perhaps my life might have been a little different. Now, somebody out there is thinking, "That's a stretch, Joy." Well, that's what you think, this is my opinion. And I honestly think that the more we do this, and the more we have people buy in, and the more we inform and not keep secret the history, the more we educate and talk about it, then I think this thing with race being one of the larger elephants in the room, we can overcome that in a prideful way. We're living in difficult times, and, and I'm, I'm back to the historical evidence. Evidence, show me the evidence. Advance and share and perpetuate that goodness. And so I hope that as you find this evidence, and we go forward to get our, what are we trying to get here?
Exemplary status.
To get that exemplary status, that we can continue to feel proud and, and put this in a place, in a way. I, I'll use one more example, and then I may let somebody else speak. I will. But I have some friends who teach down in South Florida, and they were telling me that when they were doing lessons on, say, Abraham Lincoln, or George Washington, or some other renowned individuals, all of the students were all excited. And when they started to talk about some examples of African-Americans that they didn't know anything about, the kids didn't feel so good, because nobody had talked to them about these folk. And isn't that a shame? And don't you feel good that we in our county won't have any boys and girls who will be feeling ashamed because they are black, and now they have some role models that they know something about? So for me, this is important work, but we've got to spread it out and not have just the black folk, I'm not saying that it's just the black folk, doing African-American History Month. It has to be something that is bought into by everybody. And so I guess I will feel that I've overcomeed when we've got that particular piece in place. Does, does that make sense? Is that kind of where we're going?
Yes, ma'am.
And I suspect that's why our, our audience is here today. I have a couple of other points, but I think I feel some people burning looks in my cheeks, so I'll let them talk.
To that point, Pastor Bowen. We love you, and she is so passionate, and we don't, none of us want to ever talk after her, because she's so eloquent, and we, we really appreciate your passion. But what I wanted to ask is if Ms. Eddington wanted to finish her presentation, because I know Ms. Lewis Butler is anxious to speak as well, perhaps we should let her, would that be okay with you, Ms. Butler?
Fine.
I just want to go through the last slide, and that's to highlight a few of, of the six different evidence that we've been able to pull together. I won't certainly go through every single one, but if you look here, the criteria for being identified as exemplary, school district, the, we have completed all of the checks there on two through six, and number one being the last to complete. And the area of number one certainly would be board approval of what we have decided to do as a school district, taking on this charge. As Ms. Bowen has so eloquently expressed, it is a very important charge. Certainly, we have, for all people, we think that it is important that African-American history is finally put in its respective place as being American history. And it should not be something that stands alone, that tries to stand on its own, that it is actually infused and infused appropriately with, with fidelity. If you look at number two, which is the structured professional development, I will tell you that I have at least five different episodes of professional development that has taken place across our district for our teachers, starting back from July 2009 with the Florida Task Force, all the way up to today, where we had teachers over at Goodwood Museum getting ready and prepared, their students for the Blended Lives program. That's just to highlight a few. If you look at number three, which is our African-American Studies curriculum, I don't even have to belabor that point, because certainly the evidence speaks here. And, and this is just an example, this, this is just a small portion of what we do. Certainly would have you here all night long if I pulled every teacher from every nook and cranny across this district and let them tell you what wonderful things are going on. But certainly, we have curriculum writers who are working feverishly to push out strong curriculum programs for the respective areas across the disciplines, as well as across the grade levels, so that it is seamless, so that it is not one more thing that teachers have to, you know, gather together. Because, because of the nature of the subject, we want to make sure that people feel empowered, because they have the tools at their, at their disposal to use and to use appropriately, because we vetted it, we've looked at it, we've researched it, and we know that it will fit and it will work, and it will be seamless, and it will be welcomed by our students, and it's certainly be to, to their benefit. If you will look at number four, which is structured teaching of the African-American History curriculum, the, the, it states that it should be teach, taught 180 days. We're not counting numbers, we're not sitting here checking off the days. With our whole heart and our whole mind and whole resources of the district and the talent that we have in our community, we know that that is going to take place. We're not sitting here and, and, you know, going behind people and checking off, and hey, this day, it looks like you, you didn't really cover this. We're, we're, the expectation is that we're doing this seamlessly and with our, our whole heart every single day, as, as it should be appropriately infused. As we looked at the science classes, we are looking at not only having historical people who are addressed in those science classes, but we want to pull in professors from the universities who actually teach those classes and have them come in. African-American professors who are physicists and chemists, come in and, and conduct those experiments with the students. Those are the kinds of things that have relevance, for a, a young man to actually see a man that looks just like them. And that will provide the strong, strong structure for that student to feel like they too can achieve. And it's not someone that's either on TV, or, or maybe their president or someone, but it's someone within their grasp. If you look at number five, which is university and school district collaboration, that too would be one of our collaboration efforts, as well as having university persons come in and conduct workshops with our, with our teachers. Those things have taken place across our district. We have the evidence here, we have the dates, we have agendas, we have programs from that that will be contained in a booklet that we will take to the State Department and, as we, you know, pursue this declaration. And of course, number six being the last, which is parent-community partnerships. We have evidence of that, we have, working with our parental involvement department here. Ms. Spooner, I'm not sure if she's still here, I don't want to put her on, on the spot tonight, but we certainly have evidence where we have had opportunities, we've taken the opportunities to work with our parent persons in our community to make sure that they are aware of different activities that are going on in the community that represent their community, that will give, be a liaison for them to get good information about African-American studies, exposure to symposiums, and all of those things, so that they can, they too can know how to help African-American students across our district. So that's our evidence. I certainly do not have that book here for you today, but you can look here and you can see my examples that are listed here. I'm excited. I would not tell us to go for something that would not be in our best interest, because I just, it's just not a good thing to do. But I'm, I'm confident, certainly looking at the number of days and times that have, the resources that have been put into this, despite the, our budget woes. I'm very impressed with the creativity that we used in my position to get the work done, to put in the time, and, and to put in the effort behind such a great, great cause. And I will stop there.
Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of things I wanted to sum up and just give the group a chance to comment, feel free. Is number one, Deputy Superintendent Marvin Henderson, we, we talked about this several years ago, because we got a lot of good friends that are in the audience. And one of the items that we felt was very, very important, that we do this right. You know, I, I was never looking for an exemplary status, so we can say we're exemplary. That, this is much deeper than that. And, and so my concern has been all along, even with diminished resources, not to make any excuses, how could we get there? And so this has been years in the making, and Kim, you've done a great job with this. And this is, some of the teachers in the district, and Mr. Torres has been here before, but we could bring hundreds of teachers in the district, we could bring. And Kim, what's important to me, that this becomes automatic with teachers? Not that we have a, a curriculum that you go to, but when there's a real-life experience when you're teaching, I love history, that you go to that example. And that's why I don't think, even with us prepared now to move forward with exemplary, that we lose the focus on professional development. Because there's no doubt that some teachers are more comfortable, and in time, with more professional development, more teachers will become more comfortable with the examples just go right automatically. And same way we do with the Holocaust, same thing we do, that we go in there and we make these real-life examples that children can relate to, that can make a difference in their future and in their life. And, and that's where Dr. Henderson and I wanted to be with this. Again, I'm proud of this entire effort, it's been a team effort. I think now it's important that we, again, go to our next benchmark, bring this to the board with timelines, and, and make sure that everybody understands that we take all this documentation to DOE, then DOE will look at our documentation to make sure they feel as good as we do about where we are. But again, it's been a team effort. And are there any examples of that, that, that y'all could talk about, that you think, and, and feel free to jump in there on this, but the comfort level for teachers through the professional development, I think is very important. I'd like to get your thoughts on that, some of y'all.
I was sitting here thinking, as you were talking, it's very important that professional development piece happens, because a lot of times we rely on the textbooks. And upon my research, I found that only 10% of the textbooks contain information related to African-Americans. So we're not gonna get it from the books. So teachers definitely need to be able to seamlessly do this, or to be automatic, and that's going to be a process for some of them. So I definitely agree that professional development is gonna be very essential to this, for us moving on in a positive direction with this.
Right. I will say, one of the professional development opportunities that we had was at the Brogan Museum through the Kenzie Collection. And I had so many teachers walk away from that environment going, "Whoa, I, I didn't learn this in my history class." And I, I, I feel cheated. I feel like I did not get this exposure as a youth, and in some regard, I'm responsible for passing this type of knowledge on to my students, and I did not have it. And so I think certainly, obviously, professional development is important, and it's gonna be critical to making sure that students get relevant content, get appropriate content, to actually move, move us forward. But I think that, that I do know that it does make a difference, and it does change hearts. And people are, are, I just, I, I don't think that anyone can sit in an environment, I've not come across a teacher in this district, can sit in an environment and learn something different and go back and do the same. They always grow, they always grow from it, and I'm proud to say that.
I just was going to say, and ask actually, Mr. Crowe, one of the things that, and I don't, I don't want to take away from the subject at hand, but one concern or observation or thought that I have, I just spent two days at the University of North Florida with college faculty, trying to teach them about course design, and having them infuse community-based learning into the STEM disciplines. Now, that's something that they're not comfortable with. Now, that's something that they're not comfortable with. Their comfort level with trying to figure out how to get civic learning outcomes and civic engagement out of STEM disciplines is not an automatic intuitive connection. But it's easily done when they're prepared. And so, we spent two days on this. And what, how do you do that? Well, you start with the end in mind, you look at your course outcome. What are the learning outcomes you're hoping to achieve? Senator Bob Graham, every time I see him, says to me, DeeDee, what are your students going to learn by the time they get to 12th grade about civics? We have the same discussion about the Holocaust, about Black history, about women's history. What female role models do we have? And, one second, I'll get you. And my point being that the professional development for all of this, we can have civic learning outcomes in every discipline, we can have Black history outcomes in every discipline, we can have all of these things in the Holocaust as well. So my point goes back to, I just want to underscore the importance of the professional development role and the value that our colleges and universities provide. We have a roomful of students, I believe, tonight. Do we? Have a roomful of students. And all of you are here to volunteer to help our K-12 curriculum, aren't you? I knew you were. I just knew that. You know, we have three great colleges in this town, two great universities, one great college in this town, where we can tap into not only the expertise, but in curriculum design and in as part of that professional development piece, bringing in mentors and students who are willing to help our older college students, who are willing to help teach these classes and help mentor our younger students along. And the American Association of Colleges and Universities has assessment rubrics that we can borrow that are based on values, which I'll be happy to talk to you about, Scotty. But the point is, I think there's a real need for us to try to get our hands around a way to integrate all of this, so that we're not asking our teachers to take on one more thing, and it's not feeling like another burden, but rather a way of teaching. Engaged learning is a teaching strategy, a pedagogy, that can infuse all of these things. And all of these learning outcomes can come out of one teaching strategy. So that's just my thought. Ms. Lewis Butler?
Thank you. This has been an exciting evening for me. Having taught science 30 years, in 1975, when I started doing exactly as you, one scientist per day in February. And by the end of the month, they would have been exposed to 29 scientists. Students received that in 1975 for me. And so, this is, I have goosebumps all over me. Because the superintendent, I thank you, I thank you, and I thank you for coming forward, making this happen in 2012, a long time coming. You're talking about some happy students, all students would be happy. I taught ESAL students. Yes, we had a professional development class, all teachers who taught ESAL students. So it's no different today, 2012, we cannot have professional development for teachers for African-American history. This should be, and it will be, professional development for all teachers. Because this is what we've been waiting on. Superintendent, I admire you for taking this grand stand tonight. I have been wanting this for 16 years, and tonight, I know this board is going to make it happen. During the workshop, we cannot vote for this, but at a regular meeting, we will put it on the agenda with the superintendents' help, and we can vote for this. I thank you for your great research that you've done. And I thank the superintendent for staying the course, relevant, rigorous, and creating That's the superintendent motto, creating relationships. Tonight, Superintendent Pons, you have created many relationships. As we move forward, we must select textbooks that include diversity. And this will help, the question you said about teachers, there's too much work put on them. If it's infused in the textbook, it's American, it's American history. And if it's American history, everybody can teach it, it's in the textbooks. And professional development, these are six initiatives that you stated tonight, they can be met. As a superintendent stated, we made it for the Holocaust, we made it for ESAL students, and we can meet it for African-American students. I thank you. You have done an exemplary job tonight, is all I have to say.
I think one of our panelists still wanted to say one more thing.
I just wanted to share, we are creating relationships, because when we're going about selecting scientists and inventors to put into our science curriculum, and we know we're starting to focus on one or two each nine weeks, that we are partnering with Florida A&amp;M University and Florida State and TCC, and reaching out to those professors to help us select the best scientists and inventors that will meet our students' needs. And it's tied into our current science curriculum. So we're out, we're out creating those relationships and our great partnerships. And I've received a lot of feedback, and they're excited about being about part of this project and helping us and doing everything the right way, so we don't have to come back and next year and the years later, we can only add to our curriculum. And the students will be learning about various people, different people at each grade level throughout their K-12 education. So I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you.
Mr. Van Camp?
This has been great, it's been very informative to me, and I really feel great about where I see what has been done and where we're going with this. Couple of things that come to mind as you were talking, particularly when we were talking about some of the things locally, and when you talked about what you included with that. I was sitting here and thinking about what a wealth of knowledge we have, not only sitting this audience, but in this community, of the number of grandparents out there that would be more than eager, and the number of kids that would be just more than eager to hear them learn more about this community. So I hope as we go through this, we will incorporate some resources from our, some of the folks sitting here and many others. And I wish the whole community could be watching this workshop tonight. But I know as a young child, I enjoyed sitting at my granddaddy's country store, listening to some, as we call the older folks, tell me about the history of some of the things that happened in my community. I listened, and I passed it on to my kids. I've taken my kids back to visit things that my grandparents taught me about my local community. And that can happen here too. So I hope we're utilizing so many of our grandparents that are out there tonight, that are so rich in the history of the African-American community here. And that we also take the opportunity for some of our children to visit places they may have never visited. Because we have so many successful African-American people here employed in Tallahassee with that, that we may need for some of these children to visit some of these work sites, to go to FAMU, FSU, other areas, and see, you know, folks that are very successful in what they're doing. Because communities, you know, is just a rich history. And on a number of occasions, it means so much to me, like Kate Sullivan tonight, to go back and hear some of the history of this. And I've probably learned more about Tallahassee and some of the minority communities from one of my best friends, Dr. Marvin Henderson. He and I didn't realize, we grew up just alike. We played the same games, did the same things, collected the same scrap metal to sell. Our lives were so familiar, and we've talked about things that we did as we grew up as kids. He talked about the Griffin community where he grew up and about Lincoln. And as an employee of Leaven County Schools and a coworker, I learned more about Marvin and what he did just by sitting out talking about our childhood. And we have so many folks here in Tallahassee that if they could pass this along, in fact, some of the grandparents may want to pass it along to their kids that live here, because they may not have gotten it either, and so they can pass it along. But I hope through our conversation with our local community people, that we pass on to our young kids the history of this rich community, some of which, you know, we know we should have changed, and it could have been different. But our kids are so eager to hear from us locally and to visit us locally, so let's make that an incorporate as part of what we're doing with this. I love the textbooks, the history, but nothing means more than a child to know a little bit about, you know, what is happening, where he lives, what happened, the communities that are there, how communities have changed, and particularly the history of some of our schools here, of how they have changed over the years. So I guess my thing would be, the more we can localize this, I think we have an opportunity to really share something that our kids can be proud of, because they can reach out and touch it, they can see it with them. And then one little final comment on the in-service and professional development, there's two parts to that. One part is can-do, and that's usually what we do, we teach people to can-do it. But the part of that can-do will never work without will-do. And will-do comes along when we, as administrators and as a board and others, put a little teeth into it. And some times, we may have to say, you will do it. And so, I think, I feel good about where we're going, I think we're getting to that point. And I think my voice has just run out. So thank you so much for what you've presented.
I just can't let this opportunity go by without saying, I took my son, or my son took me, to the Riley House not long ago, the museum, and Dr. Riley himself is there. And if you have not seen him, it is one of the highest-quality museums. I had no idea we had such a wealth of that kind of museum here in this town, never mind in, you know, New York City or something. It was really fascinating. And much like you were just describing, my son sat there and listened to this, the model of Dr. Riley speak for a good, you know, chunk of time for a 15-year-old, so. Ms. Lewis Butler, and then Ms. Bowen, and then we're going to, and then Mr. Crumpler.
Sorry.
Okay, I wanted to share with you that, tonight as you spoke, I saw myself years ago. And I wanted to share about Dr. Tucker, or the physicist, that retired from FAMU, Flame University. I had him at my class many times. Anytime I, if I taught energy and lights, sound, then I invited the physicist to come out. And we got away from that. I'm so happy to have you back aboard in science, so we can bring this life experiences back to the classroom for our students. And also, as the person that was the chair of the Black History Brain Bowl, I did, we did it the whole year, because we want to beat people like Lincoln. So you don't get to do it one month, you do it the whole year. And make it a part of the club for each month, and meet twice a month or more, and then you can beat Lincoln. Lincoln, I'm so proud of Lincoln, you've been winning forever, and that's a good thing, thanks to you.
Mr. Crumpler?
Start off with, Kim, Sylvia, Mike, Brian, Anisha, thank you very much. I wish the cameras weren't on us. Seriously, I wish the cameras would have been facing you and that people at home could have seen what we saw, your eyes, the whole heart, Kim, you talked about that. You know, I sit up here and think, you know, let's talk about the red elephant in the room. There's some that are sitting here saying, why are we talking about Black history? Why do they have a special month? Let's just talk about the elephant in the room for a second, which those of you that know me, know I like to talk about it. I thought about the textbook example. In 2012, you pulled up a textbook, 10%. I remember in my textbook back in the day, when Superintendent and I were in high school, it was probably half a percent. I would submit to you, Kim, and to others, that let's don't wait on the textbooks, because the textbooks are, you know, if they're 10% behind. This is not about Black history, this is about learning about people that we are involved in, engaged in, and you know, that was a great story, you know, that Forrest just talked about Marvin. And I'm going to tie this all in, I'm going to say ditto to everything that my colleagues up here have said. But I'm going to go back to the benchmark, I always go to parental involvement, and I'm not going to stop here tonight. Don't raise your hands, but I would submit to you that everyone in this room, this is not just our teachers' responsibility, this is not the district's responsibility. Our children learn behaviors from us as parents, and you've got to get engaged. I won't go into a detail, my daughter, who's a freshman in college, was interviewed for a scholarship recently, and the question that her professors asked her was, have you ever been exposed to different cultures other than your own? She goes, Dad, I just kind of laughed. You know, it's our responsibilities, not only our teachers, and our teachers are going to do it, but the people at home. When's the, Kim, you know the answer to this question, many of you in the audience may know this question. The most segregated hour in our community is when?
Sunday, 11:00.
On Sundays at 11:00. If you go to an African-American church, plan on staying for two and a half hours.
Easily.
Easily. Not too many, not too many kids know that. When's the last time you exposed? My kids have been exposed to that, not just once, not just twice, to get my little gold star. And this is not about getting a gold star, of being an exemplary district. And that's why I said, I wish that the people at home could see your faces and your smiles and what you guys are doing in your classrooms. I've seen some of you instruct. That's important. This is not about getting a gold stamp, this is about infusing it, this is about, you know, the more we learn about each other, this scares the heck out of some people, the more we realize that we are a lot alike. We all want the same things. I don't know anybody, any parent in this room that doesn't want their kids to be successful, that their grandkids will be successful. I don't know anybody who wants to make just a little bit more money. Okay, we all want the same thing. So if we infuse this and make this a whole-hearted effort, which I believe that we are, and this is something that we have been doing, we just have to meet some criteria for the state to say that we're a gold star, elite district in this. But it goes much deeper than, I think it was Joyce said it, much better than I could. You know, to make sure that our teachers understand the importance of this, and it makes us a better community, it makes us, you know, some people, I remember, you know, why do you send your kids to public schools? Why don't you just send them to a private school where everybody looks like you? And I can tell you that as an employer, someone that has hundreds of employees, I don't want somebody like me be a scary place, if we were all like me. I want people that are diverse, that have experiences, that have sat down and talked to, not only African-American people, not only Asians, but every race that we have. We are a minority, can't think of it.
Majority.
Majority, thank you. District. What does that mean? You know, our workforce is diverse, and I know I'm getting a little bit of joy in me, I'm preaching a little bit, but this is a soapbox, it's important. Parents have to, you know, I took my kids to Auschwitz, because I wanted them to see history and to see what happened. Now, not every parent can do that, but you can doggone sure get a book out, and you can doggone sure say, you know what, this African-American right here was a great scientist. And you don't have to go very far. As you were talking about that, I'm sitting here looking at three African-Americans that are very successful in our own community, in their own right, that are sitting on this board. And it is so important, you know, when is the last time that people in this room have brought someone of a different color in the last six months into your home and has broken bread with you? It's a routine in my house, that, you know, people of different colors stay at my house, of different religious beliefs. It makes us a better community, and I know I'm getting a little passionate about this, but it's just really important. And for those people that might be sitting at home saying, you know, again, why are we talking about this during the month? We shouldn't talk about white history in one month, nor all year long, nor should we talk about it, Black history in just one month. I think it's something that we should infuse into our curriculum. And again, I'm really proud of the teachers that are sitting up here tonight. Scotty, you don't get as much credit because you're not in the classroom. I appreciate, I appreciate your effort as the leader here, but specifically to the five of you sitting here, kudos, good job.
Can I say one more thing? I think that when you talk about getting people hardened to it, we need to understand that before we can close the achievement gap, we have got to close the awareness gap.
Now you're talking.
You know, and I think that if we can drive that point home to everybody, there will be a greater sense of urgency to make sure that we are doing this effortlessly and without being made to do it. But realizing that that is what it's going to take.
Right, very good.
And may I, you were about to call on Madam Chair.
I was just about to call on Ms. Bowen for her final comments.
All right then, I shall sum all of my comments up. Those are my thoughts exactly, and Mr. Those are my thoughts exactly. And Mr. Crumpler, until you feel the passion and compassion that we, you felt and I feel and others feel, change will not happen. You've got to feel that and live it and be it and get a little teary-eyed and start to feel at the heart level to make some things happen. My philosophy is each one, reach one, teach one. Each one, reach one, teach one about the importance of living together and respecting each other and, and, and knowing about each other so that, so that life can be different. Mr. Superintendent, I was over the other day, I've been several places, but most recently at Cobb for African-American History Month program. It was probably one of the best programs I've attended in the 12 years. Shelly Bell is principal there, as you know. She had outstanding speakers, but Dr. Elizabeth Hollifield brought with her a human resource in the person of one Ms. Dixie. Ms. Dixie is a civil rights activist right here in Leon County. She has worked with C.K. Steele, Martin Luther King, all of these folk. And this little 80-some-year-old woman took the microphone and I thought, oh my God, I certainly do hope everything stays even keeled. They listened. The children wanted to hear firsthand what this little great-grandmother had to say. And I thought, what better example, you know, of, of living history, in particular in this month, this show, this month in the year. That we have these individuals to help us lift that veil of not knowing and providing information on an ongoing basis and having lived it. That is my final comment. Y'all have done an outstanding job. I'm just hoping that you will continue to eat your Wheaties. And, and, and others can feel the, the fire that we need to have as we make this county different and better.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.